We call this meeting to order at 7:01 on Wednesday, September 20th, 2023. Roll call? Yeah.
I am here.
Trustee George. As am I. Trustee George. Here. Trustee Friedman, present. Trustee Zawie, absent. Trustee Graziano, absent. Then trustee Hayes, absent.
We have two guests. Eliza Jarvey. I mean, no, but I just wanted to give you a heads up for notes. Great. I'd like to welcome everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, peaceful, with liberty and justice.
Thank you.
Right. Right. So we have our agenda this evening. Renee sent it out with a packet a few days ago. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I would like to add your other business and note about new ad hoc committee for staff morale support.
Ad hoc committee for?
Staff morale and support.
Any other additions or corrections to the agenda for tonight? Hey, hearing none. Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to address the board tonight? No one has zoomed in from the public. Okay. That leads us to item six, approval of the board meeting minutes from August 15. And they are in your packet. I have, I have a requested addition. And it would be. Of course, I highlighted on yellow on the electric copy. Okay. Um. It would be 10 new business letter C, building and maintenance needs of the library. I guess number one. Letter I, number one. I'd just like to clarify that the overspend is to be covered by our reserve, our balance, our fund balance, our fund balance. You know, that, that we know the source of the overspend on the annual budget is coming from that. Your, your, your accrual. Any other additions, corrections to the minutes, clarifications? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes with that small addition.
I move to approve the minutes with a small addition.
Thanks, Janie. Sandy, thank you for the second. We are rolling on then, I believe. Item number seven. So all in favor of approving the minutes.
I.
I. Thank you, Renee. Of course, it's been a month, at least, don't think longer. I'm seven.
Yes. So I'd like to introduce Anna Feith House, and Anna is our adult programming coordinator who has worked at this library for many years. She is a library school student at the University of Illinois. And I would say all of us are so proud to have her on our team. What she's going to be talking to you about today is a brainchild that she came up with herself. And it's a project that she's participating with a variety of staff. And she'd like to invite the board of trustees to participate as well. So as she passes out things, I am going to give the floor to Anna to talk about her fantastic project and initiative, Share Your Story.
Thank you, Renee. So the Share Your Story, How Libraries Make a Difference is going to be an interactive display through the months of October and November. This is going to be a way for our community to engage with us about their life story essentially with libraries. What do libraries mean to them? What impact have libraries had on their lives? What's the role of libraries to them? So we are going to be having these cards that are in front of you out and available in both the youth department downstairs and circulation desk. And patrons of all ages are going to be invited to fill out a card with a washable marker. This, you know, road safety aspect there, telling us about the impact of libraries in their lives. We wanted to do this so that we can start engaging our community more about really what they see as the value of our library and also just start the dialogue with both patrons and staff. So we've already had cards passed out to the staff to fill out, which have, they have options with the same prompts that were put in front of you, as well as a few prompts that are directly about library work. Like a patron made me smile today when, to try to build some of that relationship, but more. We have five prompt options, and anybody who wants to do a free response, just work it over to back. Eliza is going to make some version of colored pencils, crayons available for the kids, and hopefully get some illustrations to help with that. And part of why I want to do this in conjunction with Book Speak, so we're doing all of these things for Book Speak that we're going to talk about later. And then we'll be launching this right at the end, transitioning in. And that has to do with what children talk about, challenges that libraries have been seeing across the country. There's been a lot of voices expressing their negative views, and we know from the people who come in every day saying, we're so happy to be here, we love the library, that there are many more voices who want to support us. We want to give them a chance to have their voice, not just, you told me at the desk that you love us, but you got to write it on a card and put it on a wall, and you get to read everybody else's comments. And this will be a really great way for us to start getting some of that feedback about which services or programs or things people are really appreciating and engaging in. Some of the prompts are specifically formulated for that, such as thanks to the library, I can access the computers. Or we're also giving them the space to say, I value the freedom to read because it gives their voice better that way. So we are asking trustees to participate. We're also going to be asking friends of the library to participate. And then when we officially launch this, all of those will already be on the walls to give people some inspiration and get them moving. So you're welcome to fill out the cards now. You can take one, but later, you could do more than one if you want to. And you certainly don't have to do them all right now. If you think of something later during October, I'm very welcome to participate. I encourage you to ask your families to as well. So I'm part of all of this, and I'm still working on like how we're going to collate all of the data. But our hope is to take all of these and find a way to really break this down for us of, here's what we're hearing from the community that's important to them. We did a community survey, and that gets more quantitative data. This will be some really qualitative data for us to look at and say, oh, we had all of these people that talked about story time. I guess story time is doing really well, or we had all of these people that talked about being able to read books with their children that they had read as children.
Before questions, I'd just like to add, what I talked to Anna about is that this is really a communication and marketing initiative. This is about elevating the position of the library in the community and giving access and voice to the community, to our patrons who we're here for. And there's been so much negativity, as you said, going out in terms of the book banning statistics, but also Chicagoland specific, all of the bomb threats that have been happening. I think this is a beautiful example of a positive impactful campaign that not only elevates our patrons' voices, but also shows the staff how their hard work and efforts are landing and impacting the community that they serve. So there are many other staff members that are involved, Eliza, she said, and Jill in communications. But this idea really came about from Anna, and I just want to acknowledge and thank Anna for coming here today and promoting this great work. Thank you. Any questions or comments? So yes, we invite you. If you'd like to take them home, you can always bring them back to the library. If you feel like before you leave today, if you want to fill them out, you don't have to put your name on them. It can be anonymous. And as she said, the staff have already filled some out. And so I'm really excited to see at the end of November, what are libraries going to look like? And also bringing that data together in a way that can inform the positive aspects of our work and help gather information about our services.
And, and I'll just add, Anna, you know, I think this is great because you're also kind of intercepting people when the library is on their mind. They've walked through the door, assuming that it's, you know, through the physical building that we're going to be primarily collecting these. So I think that's a great idea.
We had to mention, we do have a digital solution as well for people who may not be able to physically, who may see us posted on social media and that aspect directly.
Great.
And we'll keep those in writing.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna, so much. Have a great evening. We appreciate you.
All right. Agenda item eight, Director's Report.
I'd like to start talking about staffing first, and that's the one of the largest sections in my Director's Report. At the beginning of August, a staff member that was already on medical leave announced that they had to leave the library due to a family relocation. We just had, we just had their party just this week, and it was a very lovely way to send them off and thank them for their contributions. That said, that was the beginning of August, and that meant that we had another position vacant. At that point, we had just hired a Marina Dove, our new associate, had just started, so a vacant position on top of training. Both part-time positions that kind of coupled onto each other. And then at the same time, Eliza and I worked on interviewing and prepping the process for interviewing for Regina's replacement. And so I share this with you to say that as we only have six full-time staff persons, one of those full-time staff individuals has been on leave due to medical reasons through the, since August until now. And staffing just continues to be very tight. I have to acknowledge and thank all of the managers who have worked their hardest to keep the desks staffed when we can and when it's needed and make sure that staff are taking their breaks throughout that time, as it's the beginning of school year. Lots of illnesses, so staffing is very tight right now. So I just want to acknowledge that and thank all the staff for their incredible teamwork and effort to get this through, to get us through, and just let you know in terms of personnel, that those are some of the changes that we're experiencing. We did eventually hire, and that information will be in the September board packet. But we're really excited that it was an internal interview, an internal hire to be able to promote someone from our team, and that also really reduces the amount of training needed, and that is just wonderful. So that is a huge amount of work that's going on right now, and I think, again, staff for all of their hard work and flexibility during this time. I know that we're going to talk a little bit more in the discussion period at the end about, with an update about the bomb threats. But I, it started in August, and I think the reason this month feels so long is because that, of that, in a, in a large part. It was the beginning of my vacation in August when that started, and I, I covered essentially what has been done at the library in response to the other locations of Chicagoland libraries receiving bomb threats. I just want to verbally acknowledge in this meeting the incredible help from the police chief, Matt Spizinski, who, as soon as all of this happened, came to me and we checked in. He shared with me information from the federal government about bomb threats, the procedure that the schools use. I, he gave that right directly to me. He provided later on some suggestions in terms of security and technology that we could implement or consider implementing, and that will be shared with the Technology Committee tomorrow. And his whole team have increased patrols, made themselves available, visible to the community and to the library. I'll say at this point, my total list is 23 library locations across the Chicagoland area. It's unclear of the motive. I do know confirmation, the FBI is still actively investigating. And I know that there was a meeting just this week at the Rails headquarters in Burr Ridge of all, inviting all of the directors at the targeted libraries to come together, share information about their local responses that they've been getting from their law enforcement, share strategies that they've employed with their staff. So I'm really happy that in the Illinois library community, we have such a supportive network. I wouldn't be able to even know all of these libraries having received these threats if it wasn't for the director's list serve that I am on and actively participating in. And one of my considerations since the beginning has been as much as I can transparent and open communication to the board and to the staff about what is going on, what I am doing. And so that is something I wanted to document for this month's board report, Director Report as well. Other things I wanted to just acknowledge, it's a huge triumph of the managers to have gone live with Outlook, Microsoft Outlook calendars. I'm not going to spend too much time on it, but the amount of work that came in to planning the transition and implementation from one calendar system to another, this was the first time, I think you all have really even had a project of this nature where they worked together and they didn't have a blueprint as to how to go about doing this. So they had to learn the thing before they could train on the thing. And they led staff training on this, and we are fully integrated now with Microsoft Outlook Calendar. It is beautiful. It is effective. It took a lot of a time and effort, and so just a huge thanks to the managers for, for doing that. Yes, all of our calendaring is on, aside from like the public side, I mean, our internal calendaring is Outlook. You all have received Outlook invitations from me since day one, but staff had not been utilizing that as a tool. Other things I wanted to highlight in the board, in the Director's Report, excuse me. I wanted to acknowledge the tremendous reaction or response that we got from the adult reading program this year. And so that's at the end of the events programming and outreach section. You'll see at the top there, I know I've included it. Yes, the Adult Summer Reading Club experienced a stupendous response with over 100 participating, and that is much, much more than we've experienced in years past. I'll say too that the seed library that you may know we offer during growing season, March through August. Jill and I have been trying to find out ways to evaluate the impact of this program and just comparing the data from the first year of the program launch to this year, there has been almost a 500% increase in the amount of usage of that collection. So it started from really 280-ish packets. To this summer, we distributed 1,686 packets. That clearly is serving a need in the community. I think there are a lot of growers here in Lake Bluff. I'm excited to work with her on continuing to evaluate it and want to thank Lizzie and some of the other staff that have been helping Jill support that service. And then the last thing I'll just highlight, I think I talked about building and maintenance every meeting. We had hired an electrician to do a lot of work in this building, and I'm really glad it's done. And the, the reason we picked the items that we picked were for staff and public safety. And there were several situations in the building with our electrical systems that were even from the Engberg Anderson report from last year identified as a safety issue. There were other issues that he identified himself as an electrician compared to the architects that came in from Engberg Anderson. He was able to identify himself with that expertise as additional safety issues. A big, a big one of those is the timers that we have in our building that manage our lights. We have three separate systems, and the reason that is, is because even with the addition of our building, there was an entire separate part of the building added after that. And so lights were added to the building because of the addition, and it wasn't integrated into the timer, the electrical system that we had. So it was just a separate system. So just giving you a little behind-the-curtain look as to some of the goings on with that system. The timers that we had, he advised new timers because there was the potential of staff potentially having an electric shock because of the old, quite old timer that we were using. And so to avoid anything like that, we've upgraded. I can change the time of, of the lights on my phone. I can be on my couch and turn the lights on if I need to in the building on the outside. We have all of our lights scheduled so that they are on at dusk and turn on and, you know, at dawn. And we'll adjust as we change time periods too. So I, I think that is just one of many improvements that I'm excited to talk about today. So that is all I'd like to highlight from the Director's Report and happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I don't have a question as much as I just want to comment on a couple of things, and they're probably related in a way. So um. You know, in early August, when Renee may be aware of the first threat to an Illinois public library, I gotta tell you, I was like, what? What? Why? And, you know, I couldn't really understand it. And then learned that other, in other parts of the country, there have been these types of threats to libraries as well. You know, we ourselves have seen some unusual events through the library in the last 12 months. So this sort of was like, you know, it just felt like things just have continued to be even more and more interesting. And, you know, there's this Chinese proverb, it's kind of a curse as well, may you live in interesting times. So I, I really just wanted to acknowledge the staff and Renee that, you know, how ludicrous we think this is. I think this is personally, and, you know, thank the village police. I, you know, it's, it's great that there's this network of support across libraries in Illinois. And, you know, clearly, we're all here because we want to help the library continue to provide its unique set of services to our community. So very sorry that you guys have to deal with us and know that we're here to support you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Yeah. The other thing I just want to comment is, I'm looking in more, in lighter fashion. I'm just looking forward to seeing all the new lights on the outside of the building after our meeting today. I cannot wait because this, this whole block on Scranton so dark when the sun goes down, whatever time it is, you know, throughout the year with the, the lights across the street not being on, that building being vacant for so long. So, you know, I, I'm glad, number one, that, you know, our building is going to be better illuminated. That is a safety feature for staff and for the community as well as proximity to the police department, that they can be here and respond quickly should anything go wrong. So. Yeah. Any other comments on the Director's Report? All right, then we're going to move on to committee reports, continuing that thread of building and grounds in our trustee church. Can you give us a summary of the last meeting?
Well, we have the 30th, and we actually spent time going over the list of needs that Renee had already provided and adding our own ideas to that and set priorities of what needed to be done first, what were high priority, what would be the priority, what would be put off a little bit longer. And Renee has already either done or completed or, or has in progress, some of those things to be prioritized. So that was great. We tabled the inspection of Engberry Anderson accessibility and site evaluation survey. I understand, were you here when you did that? Walk around all the stuff.
That was before. Bonnie couldn't return.
So, so yeah, Renee gave me a brief walk around of some of the things that came in shopping cart or some of the room. And it also had, kind of, a survey that is Sean?
Yes.
That was going to fill out. So I had a list of questions, and he was kind of going by review. Mention, you know, thinking out loud and so on. So we should be getting that shortly again.
I think I would estimate sometime by the end of October, if not earlier. I think there will be one more meeting with me and whoever from the Building and Grounds Committee can attend to finish the packet. We only got through it half. So there's still a lot more questions to go through. And then he'll compile all that information and the staff. I actually gathered information from staff about the accessibility of this building and have incorporated, put together a report that he's going to incorporate into his final report, which is just staff feedback. So I think that's going to be a really robust report that's going to tell the board a lot of things.
And I believe we have a Monday meeting scheduled, September 4th?
October 4th.
October 4th.
Yes. Okay, we'll talk. Got it.
So that's, that's what I have.
I have a quick question for you, Renee, to clarify. So is Sean meeting individually with some staff members to get staff input, or it's, you're collecting it?
Collecting it. I've already collected it. And the information that he is getting from me, he's meeting with me one-on-one. So, and that's going through and walking through, like Janie was saying about the building. And any staff, any board member that, we tried to find a time that worked given his schedule, but I know that if he's available in more of an afternoon or evening time, we'll try to find that time for our next conversation. So yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. The next committee that met is Human Resources.
Sure. Thank you, Janie.
We can speak to that, but we met both on the 28th and 29th of August. The 28th was two big final touches on the report that you were going to present for May. So that was the executive session. And then our 29th, the event was for May, and we took the direction of the board, which was for lovely evaluation. And we had a great back and forth feedback on that, I believe. And our next meeting will be to do many further tweaking that we can, since during the weekend stretch, although we know our mission keeps getting better and better since last several years. So I don't think there's going to be too much more to keep. So, but would you like to add anything?
I'm going to present the goals that I have for myself, and that's informed by the HR committee and also staff feedback and the board feedback. And I'm going to present them at the October board meeting, I believe, is what we discussed. Most likely an executive session. And so from then until now, I'm compiling all the feedback and having reviewed all of it. I just want to acknowledge again, and we talked about this at the staff meeting on Friday, just how much work went into filling out all of those surveys from the board, especially in staff. And so I really take, you know, my professional growth very seriously, and I'm very committed to continuing to learn how to maximize myself in this position. And sometimes that means doing less instead of doing more, and that's okay. So it was just a little lesson, and I just really want to thank the board and all of the trustees that even are not here for your For your fantastic um, insight and I look forward to working with you all more.
Yeah. I'll just very quickly add, um, you know, the response rate on feedback for Renee's mid-year. Was pretty phenomenal in terms of like eight out of nine total current past trustees who worked with her responded. And I think over seventy percent of all the staff may, could may be off.
It was a high.
Um, cuz there may have been a vacancy or two um, during the, the survey period. So the, the number of responses we got was phenomenal. Everything was read, everything was read and the, and the feedback was very positive. I don't know if we've shared the written. Um.
No.
Feedback that we gave to Renee with the rest of the board.
Jenny can decide to do that if that's been done before. Um, because that's the final written review incorporates my goals. Is what I remember from the meeting. And so that's why we were going to wait to share. Um, as I develop those goals and put that in the report, then it's shared with the board.
Okay.
And then that's a.
So more to come on that, more detail to come for the, for those not on the HR committee. Um, but yeah, it was a great, it was a great partnership, I think, across the HR committee and uh.
He goes to Jen and she. Not nearly.
Yeah. The, the HR committee starts at standing monthly meetings in the month of October. We decided to take September off. Cuz you're very busy in August.
Thank you again.
Yeah, you're welcome. Alright, so those are the um, committee reports. Yes, you know, other comments about committees, we're gonna move on to financial reports.
Alright. And so um, I'll keep these brief. Um, I'll start with the uh, revenue and expenditure report. We are ahead of schedule and receiving our property tax revenue. Bill, if he were here, would be happy to see that. Fifty-two point six eight percent. Um, and we are also very ahead of schedule in our estimation of our interest earnings. From our um, investments. So you'll remember that our, our existing fund balance is invested in. Um, in an account that um, is both liquid but also at, at a high rate of interest. Um, so we, we knew in talking about finance last year, this was an underestimation. So I think it was even more under than we are experiencing now. So that is very happy to see. So in terms of expenditures, there are just two things I wanna highlight. You'll notice that um, the IMRF retirement contribution. Is zero point zero zero. I already asked Bettina about why that is. There's a monthly payment that's made every month to IMRF for those staff that receive IMRF. And um, she's been out for a long time this last month and she said the payment was made later than she typically does. So what we'll see next month on next month's um, expenditures report is actually um, kinda double what our usual payment is. But it will all balance out because it did not go through by the time that this report was run. So that's why it's zero and she passed along her apologies, but um, Bettina is fantastic and I knew that she'd get back to me right away with an answer for that. Um, the last thing I wanna talk about with regarding expenditures, we're coming in at about sixty-two percent for our professional development. And so you may remember, we increased our professional development last year um, to this year to provide more training experiences for staff. And um, this one thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollar charge is actually for a training. That our four managers are going to be attending together, starting in the month of October. Um, it is a series, I believe, six to eight weeks. I'm not quite sure how many weeks, but um, it is all about library management. It takes, it takes them through really uh, the one-on-ones of managing and scheduling to um, performance evaluations, budgeting. Um, this room is going to be reserved for the four of them to attend these live um, trainings together. I mean, I'm really excited about this kinda collaborative um, learning opportunity for the four of them. Um, to be able to build their skills and build on all of their um, existing skills too. So um, that is money well spent in my book. Um, I'm very excited to uh, work the desk for them while they're in here. So I wanted to highlight that and I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have of the revenue and expenditure report.
Other questions on the revenue and expense reports? Let's go on twice. And then I would look for a motion to approve. Thank you, trustee Friedman.
I'm excited.
Excellent work, trustee Church. Um, roll call vote, this is the most money. Great. The August revenue and expense reports have been approved. That takes us to the checks.
Nothing terribly different um, from a month of checks. I do wanna highlight, cuz there were questions before. Um, and just to highlight for everybody here, um, the library has um, several credit cards. And so the um, the first bank card checks that you see um, written out in the check disbursement report. Are for the staff with those credit cards. Each staff member has a specific limit. Um, and then as those charges are made, um, they identify which budget code it gets charged to. Um, I manage the limits based on um, what is needed, based on the scope of their work. Someone like Eliza, for example, has programming, um, programming supplies. Um, there may be opportunities for other purchases outside of that. Um, someone like Jill, who does outreach, um, may need to grab um, a pack of water for a big event coming up this weekend. Or things like that. Um, we also uh, so anyway, so I wanted to highlight that. Um, and as you can see, it's um, it's separated out into those different cards. So um. Together overall, there's one check written to bank of um, to First Bank. Um, and so, but never any one of them exceeds any of the director's authorization. Um, so I do wanna just share that information. Um, we also have put down our deposit for a very exciting painting job that will start next month. Um, so Gary Levin um, actually is a painter by trade. That is his main business. He does handy person services and maintenance on the side. Um, and so he will be the one with his crew painting the exterior, the southern exterior. Thank you to trustee Church for your excellent help over um, WhatsApp, picking the color of the paint. Um, we had a great uh, conversation via technology to find the right color for the outside of the building. Um, which I think will very, you'll all be very pleased. We're not doing anything different. We're not, we're not reinventing the wheel. We're really just sticking to basically what it is, um, with just a little bit more, what did you say, a little more yellow, warm tones to it. Um, so it's essentially a gray, um, gray-blue, um, called Let It Rain. I love the name of that color. So aside from that, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the check disbursement report.
I just have a quick question on the exterior painting. What's the total estimate?
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred, thank you.
Which came in right to where we were, right smack in the middle where we were hoping. So any exterior work of the building is possible for us to get that reimbursement, that village dispersment in the revenue section. So this will definitely be part of that. And at last year's number, if we were to look in the revenue and expenditure reports, you see last year's number. Which was about ten thousand and that's what we've hunted in for this year. Bettina says there's always just a slight calculation from the state depending on how that formula is developed. But um, this will definitely be something that we could include for part of that contribution, for that reimbursement from the village. So really, our building and maintenance could um, be expanded by that additional fund.
Yeah, whether it's maybe some of the exterior lighting.
Yes, any of that.
I also did ask the village if the um. Renovation of the gas torch-like lamp that's out there, if that could be part of the village contribution for the building and grounds.
It could even be the sign. I know I've commented to a couple of you, the wood sign on the front hanging off of that light. Is quite cramped and needs to be either refinished or completely replaced. Um, essentially that could be part of it too.
So we'll make sure to maximize that. Okay, any other questions or comments on checks for this month? Hearing none. Uh, can I get a motion on checks number fifteen, seven, two, one through fifteen, seven, five, oh?
I'm so moved.
Thank you, trustee Church. Thank you, trustee. Jeanne. Jeanne Dean. Gotcha. Uh, roll call. Hi. Hey, checks approved. That takes us to item number eleven, new business.
So the first item is um, a, a review of our annual holiday and special hours calendar. This is a calendar that you are all as trustees presented every year around this time of year to approve for the next calendar year. So these are all of the days that we are closed or we are proposing that we close. Um, or potentially have hours adjusted. So this is the full list that I've listed out for you. This does include summer Sundays. Um, so from uh, Memorial Day through Labor Day, um, as has been typical and traditional here at this library. We close for those Sundays. Um, it also includes the holidays that staff who receive holiday pay. Um, receive. Um, so that includes federal holidays for sure. It also includes um, Easter. That's a holiday that we've typically opted in to closing, even though it is not necessarily. Um, required for libraries to have to close that day. Um, this list also includes all of our staff in services and those are um, really just wonderful times for us to come together. And learn and connect. Um, this last Friday, si- staff in service was fantastic and um, staff really appreciated the HR committee's. Um, uh, buffet of breakfast to thank them for all of their contributions for the um, performance evaluation input. Um, and so we typically meet Fridays once a month, the third Friday of every month. Um, and we open the library late at twelve noon to allow us those two hours. And I've worked at many libraries. This is not unheard of, but it's exceptionally rare, the idea that we would. Close to the public and forego access to give staff time to connect. We're such a small library. It's hard for us all to connect at the same time. I mean, I just really appreciate it just from a director's standpoint. Um, so we are very grateful to have that continued support. Um, I do wanna highlight one change, which is different from last year. It is fourth of July. Um, and the day before fourth of July being July third, I have to tell you, having worked that day here. Um, we saw very, very little um. Attendance in the building, um, and engagement. And not only that, I think there's a benefit to us closing early the day before. Because so many staff opt to work on the fourth of July and there are several of us that have to come quite early for the next day. Um, and so given the um, people, honestly, they were just surprised we were open. Um, and the low, low attendance in the building, um, and the need for staff to build in that extra time for working. Our very popular parade. Um, this schedule is a, a slight change from last year's, which is to propose that we close at five. On the night before fourth of July. Happy to answer any questions. Through nine, through nine.
Yeah.
And just from a cost benefit perspective, I did not see the value in having the library open, given the. Yeah, given the attendance in the building and the need for other staff to have to then um, manage the programming. Needs of the building for the day of the fourth.
As, as you've seen, fourth of July, which starts on the third.
Yes, yes. You know.
In addition to the proposed early close on the July third, I feel like previous years and in. Each of the last two previous years, I thought we also closed earlier. The day before Thanksgiving or the Wednesday before, or the Tuesday, one of those. Um, I don't know if, if Janie remember. Alive.
Have you guys know that? I remember Charlie. We did, Janie proposed that we close on the Wednesday before, yeah, again, maybe that proposal was accepted.
Okay, but this proposal is to close the Wednesday.
So that was a slight change. Okay, so and yeah, I think some of this is just my not knowing what we did prior previously and. Those dates don't get kept. Um, but yes, thank you.
Most of the schools. Close that one year from that Wednesday as well.
Is, um, and this is just because I'm not sure, um, for Christmas Eve, is that typically a day that the library is closed fully?
Yes.
Okay. In other libraries I've worked at, um, a similar thought has been considered with Thanksgiving. The idea that there could be staff, me, you know, staff having personal needs the day before the big holiday and. My, having always worked the day after Thanksgiving in libraries, it's actually one of my favorite days to work. Um, it, it's so important that we open the day after Thanksgiving. The amount of um, families that come in from out of town, they're giving, you know, the parents who are cooking respite, grandparents, aunts, uncles, all of that. Um, I think it's very important we're open the next day, but I would be open to discussion for. Thank you for highlighting that.
Sure, well, I'm glad that you just highlighted that it, it is, we are open on Friday and.
Yeah.
Historically, we have been open on the Friday after Thanksgiving.
In twenty twenty-three, it goes at two P M.
Okay, so that was the schedule you all approved, you proved last time. Okay, perfect. I should have looked at that prior to. Thank you so much.
Okay, but historically and proposed for twenty twenty-four, we would be open on, on the Fridays, your proposal.
Totally, yeah. And it doesn't sound like you all have ever not been open. That's pretty, yeah, yeah.
I, I do have a question, Renee, and this, you know, goes back to um. Ensuring that you, as the leader of our library, have good balance in. The, the work you're, you're doing and how you're supporting the team here. Eight staff in services throughout the year. Is that? I, I believe it's certainly more than, than. I, I, than I've, I've seen in at least the two years that I've been with the library now, almost two and a half. Um, to, to, to tackle, if you will, eight throughout the year. Um, I just wanna make sure that you feel that is achievable and provides the right kind of balance with the other demands you have here at the library. Because it'll be you and the management team probably who determine what happens when and then making it happen.
Absolutely. I think that's a really fair question. Um. One of the reasons I think we're different is because we don't have the ability to have a staff meeting every month. It's pretty common in the libraries I've worked at for there to be a staff meeting. But this and, and how I've interpreted it perhaps wrong is in place of those staff monthly meetings. Um. As I've experienced our staff in services, so many of our staff are part-time. And we do not often have overlap with staff together to have joint trainings, joint meetings. One of the things that we talked about just on Friday was um, me bringing in a safety. I've already spoken with Officer Matt. Um, a topic of need is a safety training um, for the staff and this is something he used to bring every year. Um, I've already had requests for an AED and CPR training. Again, we've kind of been off that rotation for a while. Um, given our very small staff, giving them time to come together and connect with each other. I, I do think it's not only helpful for their learning and training because many cases, like Eliza's department is, is a good example. Her staff don't get off desk time. Um, you. Her staff don't get off desk time. Um, you barely get off desk time because your desk is in the public. If you haven't checked in your services yet, um, definitely encourage you to do that. Um, the same is true for the staff upstairs. So the staff who are working our service desk, if I weren't to find a training that I'd like them to attend. They would have to come in on a different day outside of their desk shift to do that, or do it from home and that's paid time. Um, as opposed to finding a time where everybody can come together and do all of that together. Um. I think it's just very uh, important that we provide these learning opportunities for staff. Um, I know there was support of increasing the professional development budget. Um, and I think given our small size and the few opportunities we have to connect. I, I see it as a morale boost too, but um.
So I have a question based on what you said, it's not clear. So does this mean that staff meeting is also happening? On the third Friday of the month, prior to twelve noon.
That's what these are.
Okay, I, when I read in service, I saw it as, um. Something in addition to.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay.
So this is the wording that I just copied from the website, because when we're closed, it uses this wording to the public to say, this is what we're doing. I think, and maybe that's a communication thing we can change, but we don't have. Full staff meetings at all outside of these monthlies, and we don't have them over the summer. In fact, some of the feedback that I was given already this summer was. It'd be great even if we could just do a virtual check-in for an hour over the summer, because there's so much that happens. And without that ability to connect on a semi-regular basis, it, it becomes more challenging, but no, these are, these are our staff meetings.
Okay, I thought these were bringing in an external person to come and deliver some sort of training or development.
Thank you for asking, so we maximize those two hours, I give, there's a five-minute break to get up and stretch and everything and. Um, we cover a lot of topics, and so the speakers that come in, um, if I do bring them in for a staff in service, they have maybe thirty minutes, forty-five minutes. The full day closing is once a year, and that would be in my mind where I use the, the phrase in-service traditionally. That would be a staff in-service, that's once a year, and that is the um, staff training day on Friday, November fifteenth. I'm so glad we're having.
Thank you.
Sure, no, thank you.
Other questions, comments, clarifications? Right, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion. To approve the twenty twenty-four calendar of closings. Thank you, trustee Freedom. Thank you, trustee church, all those in favor? Hi. All those opposed? Okay, we have our twenty twenty-four calendar.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
All right, that brings us to new business number two, intergovernmental agreements.
So, um, a little background, uh, the library has three intergovernmental agreements with schools. We also have an intergovernmental agreement with the museum, but that's not what this is about. So, um, we have an intergovernmental agreement that outlines the terms with which, excuse me. The library and the schools work together to provide access to our library for their students in their schools. Um, this was my first year, uh, learning about the program, and um, I've worked in other libraries with similar programs. Um, and it's pretty common to have uh, an IGA, never intergovernmental agreement to lay out the responsibilities of each party. Um, and so my predecessor used to do this every year, and so it always would come before the board. Um, I issued all of the updated uh, contracts and deep uh, one-one-five is the first one to be able to execute them. Um, and so that's why you have this one here before you today. Um, it's already been reviewed and approved at the school board level. By District one-one-five, um, and uh, so at this point, it requires um, a vote of approval. And then it will also have a signature by um, Bonnie and then in a test of, of our secretary. So, um, one thing I do want to mention about this is that, um, we just signed on to a new law firm. And I think one of the important things in working with them is their review of our new policies as we update policies, having them review it before. It's voted on by the board, um, is a really crucial thing, and I think the same goes for these contracts. That said, um, the way that the timing lined up for um, staff to. Um, prepare these documents so that I could learn about the program and then for it to go into effect. Um, it didn't line up, i- if we wanted to have the lawyers review it and then make changes, and then it would have to come before the board first. To approve it before it even goes to there, um, the time, I have a, a vision for next year, which is um, different. That will include the lawyers reviewing this in April or May. Um, so that our updated contract, when we're ready to send it to the schools, um, it is, it is ready to go. I ha- asked staff and they are unsure about the last time that the law firm reviewed the contract. I know they did, there's just, we're just not sure how up to date. Um, and I think with having new legal representation, new eyes on it, I think will be helpful. Um, so I wanted to let you know that that's why we opted to use the existing um, intergovernmental agreement. And next year, early in the spring, we will present this to um, our lawyer. Who will then make edits and present them to the board for our approval first before it goes to the school board. And then back to us for final signature.
So and here's the, uh, one fifteen has already.
They have, and I'll highlight the only things that change is what I was told, the only things that change are the calendar year, the school year. The names of the people in case they have new staff, um, and. You know, there is a question, I think, just something to pose for the board and the school district in terms of, um. Payment for this program, the amount of money that this program, um. Uh, the partnership costs in terms of coverage of any lost items or anything of that nature, each district pays a separate amount. And so District one-one-five, um, and I, as I'm trying to review it very, very quickly, five hundred dollars. That fee has never changed since the creation of the, um, contract. Now, I don't think we're going to be able to build a new building if we increase this, you know, a little bit, but I do think that, um. Just right sizing that figure, um, given inflation and other things, I don't know if it's based on the school population size. Um, so having those conversations again, I think will be helpful, um, to be able to uh, have another aspect of review for this. Yes, they've already been um, drafted, they've already been sent to District sixty-five, Forest Bluff has a different. Um, school year time period that they prefer to have the contracts received, and that's typically November, so that hasn't been set yet. I'm just following what I've been told since I knew, um, but uh, sixty-five already has theirs as well. One-one-five just was really on top of it and just asked us, can you have it by this day? And so we were able to do that for their school board meeting. I will, perhaps.
All right, so do we, can we vote on? Looking for a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with District one fifteen. Okay, uh, trustee Jardine. I got your first, and is there a second? Trustee church, all those in favor? Hi, all right.
Thank you very much.
Perhaps, Aliyah, I can sign it tonight.
Yeah.
We are moving along pretty well.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
The next document I just want to share, and um, we could have discussion that's not necessarily needed, but. Um, there have been questions about how do we engage on social media for the library, and everybody has a different. Comfort level, awareness, knowledge of social media and the impact that it plays for a library. I do have to say, one of the da- the dates, excuse me, one of the data points in our, um. Graphs this month was actually that our website, um, the actual hits on our website, it keeps going up. And I was gonna make a shout-out to our communications team, the changes that we're making are, are working, um, streamlining our communications. And I think that's the goal, is to bring people to the website, so that's where we have all the information about our programs or services and so forth. Social media helps complement that, and so I just want to acknowledge Jill and the report that she put together. Um, about social media and also at the bottom, how library trustees can promote the library through social media. A lot of you already do this, so none of this is maybe new, but I just wanted to let you know that we're always open to ideas. Um, and if you're, uh, if you ever have any questions, happy to answer them for you, um, and uh. It's also, I, I'll add to accessibility is a topic that, um, Jill and I have talked about a lot and. Uh, you will potentially or have already seen some changes in some of our content to add image descriptions. We've added alt text on the backend, our goal is to be as accessible as we can to a broad audience, and so. Um, I'm just really impressed with the creativity of our staff. Um, it was Talk Like a Pirate Day yesterday, and for those of you that may have engaged in those videos, you were on it, Eliza. Um, you know, that's a connection point that we can make to people, um, with the library, with staff, and it really is impactful. Um, and so I am really proud of our teams, um, small but mighty, social media work, um. And compared to other libraries around here, we have some pretty good numbers for followers, given how small we are and the few staff that we have on it. So, thank you to Jill for putting this report together, I just wanted to share it with you.
I also say I appreciated the use of social media for highlighting the bottom threats that. If you like the transparency piece, it's really important, and also gathering support from the community in terms of feed like that. Our staff, but also like awareness of the things libraries do is really important, so, uh. I love all the stuff that Jill puts together, it's so creative and also just appreciate the less fun side, but very excited of using it as a communication tool, so.
Thank you. That was very intentional, I remember when the first one happened, you and I had a conversation, and I've always had a lot of support from, uh. Bonnie and the rest of the board in terms of communication efforts, and so, um. I, I'll add that not all public libraries that have received threats are choosing to be transparent with their community. A, that it even happened at all, and B, that other libraries are experiencing it. Um, and so I think we are opting to be on the right side of that choice, frankly. Um, because safety and security is a, is a community issue, um, and so I really appreciate that support.
Thank you for that, Renee and Julie. That takes us to agenda item twelve, library correspondence.
So I tried to do something different this time, because you may remember in the last meeting or so, I talked about us re-upping our. Uh, comment cards, we hadn't had them out for a very long time since pre-pandemic, but our comment cards are really important ways. To be able to give the patrons, the reason why we're here, a voice to tell us what their experiences are like. The photocopies didn't do as well as maybe the digital, so I encourage you, I'll read them for you, but, um. The first one that I want to highlight, all of these comment cards is recognition. Um, staff are often talked about in their impact in their work, and on these comment cards, we are hearing from the community. Um, specifically the comment card about sensory storytime from Miss Vanessa, being excellent, very welcoming, and providing an inclusive environment. Um, for our son Cooper, she was great, will come again. Um, this is a, a dream for a director to see. Not just the, um, the qualitative data that a program that's been designed by staff members is making a difference in the lives of this family. Um, but that we are, we are working towards our goals of being welcoming and inclusive right here. And also to see Vanessa named for the um, fantastic work that she does. Um, we are, I'm just so proud when I see comments like this, so just so you know, from a, a director's standpoint. I'm always looking for these opportunities, a- and we also have, I, I think that the idea of a book ban week is an excellent idea. Already, we haven't even done it and we have support for it. Um, so I think, uh, just something to let you all know. Um, that the community is vocal and appreciative of our work. Next item I wanted to share with you is about library hours, um. This was a Facebook message that we received, again, I apologize for the quality of the copying, it's not the copier, as you can tell. As you can tell, it's not the copier, because everything else looks great, it's the quality of the image, I made it bigger and it had small, um. Uh, it was a smaller image, so it didn't, um, it wasn't quality in that, making it bigger. So the comment is, is it possible to open the library at eight-thirty AM or nine AM instead of ten AM? It would be a good place for many students, let alone the community, to begin the day with school-related work on their own work. I really appreciate the availability of the library in the afternoon, but found it difficult to find a quiet space to focus on. Work and school in the mornings as the library doesn't open until ten. I'm sure it will be helpful to the community to be able to access the library space earlier, as most schools and work from home begins around eight-thirty. So I'm sharing this with you, not because I think there's anything actionable at this time. Um, we are strained with the staff that we currently have in our current hours, but I do think that it's helpful to see comments like this. So that you know what the community is asking for, and as we make short-term and long-term decisions collaboratively about operational hours. And things like that, um, if, I usually think if we get a comment, there's probably somewhere out there in the community of someone that thinks the same thing. They just haven't reached out to us and asked or said anything. Um, so I just wanted to put that on your radar, this isn't the first time I've heard about this, um, question, someone's asked me this in person. But, um, it was the first time I had something in writing to be able to share with you. And then the last thing that I wanted to share with you is suggestions, so on the backside of this, um. We get so many great suggestions from the community, and you know, libraries have limited capacity. But it's important for libraries to be informed by the community that they, um, serve. And I just wanted to share with you, um, specifically one of them, this idea of adult Spanish books. We don't have the space for a collection of this nature, and we don't currently have the funding set aside, although I think we could make that. Um, but we also have questions about, um, having kids borrow telescopes or a library of things. Other libraries circulate baking pans, you know, um, shop tools, all sorts of things. Um, asking for a book club, and lastly, asking for us to bring back trivia overflow. Now, I will not be doing that, I just want to remind you that that is not something that I think we can afford to do with our current staffing level. But this is the feedback we're getting from the community, and so. You know, any library gets that feedback and then responds based on, you know, all of the factors of that particular situation. Um, and staff who go to trivia do a great job navigating those conversations. Um, they said that that was a testing year, which it really was, based on what I understand from staff, it was just to test that out. Um, but that it's not sustainable, so staff are having those conversations, but in general, I just want to let you know the types of, um. Comment cards that we do get and the interactions we get in our social media and our, our, um, channels. So that you can see that we're constantly getting feedback from the community. Um, you will never work at a library where the community is totally satisfied with everything you're doing, they might love everything you're doing, but they're always wanting more. Um, and that is just part of the work, um, we can't always do everything that the community wants, but I just wanted to throw this out there to say. Um, I'm really glad the community feels comfortable engaging with us, and also, there's so many great things that we can't do in our current situation, so. That is all I have for correspondence. Good effort.
Um, but it is, I mean, the, that's what many people love, and even though there is, it's maybe not. This is some kind, I guess you would say constructive feedback, but that it is meeting a demand that the community offers, so it's kind of not meeting.
Absolutely.
But it is providing something that, you know, so.
I often talk about that with storytime, if you live in Deerfield, you already know this, even though you don't, but, um, Deerfield Storytime, since I worked there in oh-seven, oh-eight. Has always filled up right away, they only do registration, and you have to call on the very first day it opens, it's still like that. You can never offer enough storytimes to meet the demand, and that is absolutely true, and so it's, it's finding that balance of like which opportunities. Uh, have maybe the highest opportunity for impact, um, meet a need, but also don't overstrain staff in any way. I'm glad that you came, thanks for coming.
All right, thank you. Um, so that concludes agenda item twelve. Executive session if needed. Okay, there's no need for executive session this evening. Brings us to our penultimate, one of my favorite words, uh, agenda items for tonight. Any and all other business. So we have one, two, three, four, five items. Um, and I have a funny feeling that Renee, you're gonna definitely take the first four.
Yes, and be very quick because a lot of these are, um, papers in front of you. This Saturday is the Lake Bluff Birthday Bash. It's my first one and I'm thrilled. I'm so excited to go. Um, Gillian Chapman has been an amazing, um, she's been a leader in the planning efforts, I have to tell you. Um, she, and we have scoped her work this year to be less than previous years. Um,
Less on the birthday bash, less hours on the birthday bash.
Yes, definitely. Um, we invite you to come out Saturday if you are in town and it's supposed to be eighty-eight degrees and lovely. Uh, I know, right? Food, drinks, fireworks. Apparently that's what brings people in. There won't be a big birthday cake this year. Everybody will get cookies in case you're wondering, um, but it is a fantastic community partnership um, that highlights all of our various community partners. So we invite you to that. Jenny, thank you Jenny Graziano, who will be, um, participating with us and helping run the program. So she opted in for that engagement.
There was some sort of communication you were seeking to from someone else regarding the birthday bash. It went to every elected. And I don't fully understand, um, where that like plays into it, but it's, I know it's not related to our goal.
So the birthday bash, if I could be so brief about it, because it is more complicated in terms of the structure. The birthday bash committee is an offshoot of the overall, um, committee in Lake Bluff that plans the Fourth of July Day Parade. For reasons of clarifying sponsor roles, the decision was to have a separate group from the, um, Fourth of July Day Parade. But they created a separate nonprofit this year to manage the money, whereas before the museum has actually managed some of the money sides of it, but wasn't just the museums group, wasn't just the museums app, but it was a community group. So, um, there are lots of people who wear lots of hats in Lake Bluff and, um, there are several of them who, some on the museum, um, either on the board or staff, Kathy O'Hara, for example, um, people from the village, um, but also Mark Stewart, who is also on the museum board, um, participating and helping plan that, as well as other people who are volunteering from the community. So it's, it's kind of its own group, um, which was one of the reasons why we were very particular about scoping the work of Jill, so as to support the library's part in this, but not overreach, given that it is a separate nonprofit with fundraising that would be inappropriate for Jill as a library employee to participate in. Um, so we had a lot of those good conversations at the beginning when I first started and I think I don't know about the future of the birthday bash, but, um, that scoped her participation this year. Um, the backside of that piece of paper, um, in your board packet, um, and I think I added too many copies, but that's okay. We'll share them elsewhere. Um, we are having, we are one of over seventy libraries to participate in this virtual program. I highly recommend all trustees to participate and register. Alexi Genulius, our state librarian, um, and Secretary of State Monica Harris, who is the, um, Executive Director of Rails, um, they are going to be talking about Illinois and book banning. Um, it's one of the first days of our, um, book banning week. Um, and there's going to be some great conversations about the current state of Illinois, what library, what Illinois is doing to manage, um, the current situation and also, um, I have a feeling the, like, the state librarian will probably talk about how it's been very difficult for Illinois libraries this last month. Um, so, uh, it's, I think it will be a very educated, um, and important program. You want glasses. This is how you get them. Um, we are doing registration for them and then people can sign up to have glasses. Um, this is the eclipse, but next April is an even bigger, more monumental eclipse. So there are two big eclipse events happening in the next, you know, year. Um, so if you or anyone you know wants glasses, we're giving them away for free. You register that way. And then, um, the last thing I just wanted to share with you too is a reminder that we still have opportunities, if you'd like to participate in any of our community events. I think you just signed up for something.
I did.
Thank you, um, trunk or treat, I believe. Very excited about, um, and Jill does a great job managing those. So those are the reminders I'd like to share.
Right. Thanks Renee. Any questions about that? Quick list of reminders from Renee. Okay, then our last, um, other business item is, uh, for Ally to lead the discussion on committee for staff morale and support.
Uh, yes, so I wanted to bring it up to the board for consideration. We do have, um, ad hoc committees or the opportunity to have an ad hoc committee as needed. And given the challenges in the past month, uh, thus the amount of work that very lean staff, uh, that are library programming, uh, both of the library serves, uh, would like the board to consider bringing in ad hoc committee on to discuss how trustees or the community can help support staff during this time. Uh, I think it's important to consider and it's not lost on any of us, I don't think, but, uh, just to say to make sure that I put it out there that library staff do more than just run a library. Um, there's the public interface, there is providing space for books kind of a first line of defense that we may not always think of top of mind of a, you know, library staff or description, but recognizing that is a very real role that our library staff play, um, that's really insane for our kids who've already experienced multiple things in the past twelve months that brought that to light. So I'd like the board to consider, um, an ad hoc committee that can engage with staff or with Renee to figure out which would be best for them, um, whether that's through resources, I know that Renee has a whole branch of directors report, um, or simply sort of wouldn't be a way that the, the organization involved, um, to say thank you because as someone who works in an industry that is also, you kind of do a lot of things where many have, I know that libraries have, so. Um, I don't have any answer or an exact proposal other than to say I would like to propose that.
Any comments? Um, so I, I'll, I'll, I'll comment that, um, a number of months ago, I think it was prior to um, yourself and Sandy being installed as trustees, elected as, sworn in as trustees to the library. Jenny Graziano had proposed, um, the creation of a, um, fund, if you will. Okay, you are aware.
I read the minutes.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay. Um, so I, I, your, your suggestion brought that to mind. Additionally, um, for the size of our library, we think we may have a lot of committees. Um, so I would propose, counterpropose, build on your comment, maybe build on your comment, sounds better. Um, that perhaps this is something that the HR committee takes up in October. Because we do have, if you will, you know, step one on our agenda or item one on our agenda was just kind of like do a SWOT analysis on what we just did. You know, how can we make it better? What do we want to stop, start, continue? That, that's sort of discussion. Um, and given trustee Graziano as the chair of the HR committee, this is a topic that she has championed before, that might be a good place to put it without putting additional burden for a separate committee, separate meeting times, a chairperson.
Maybe it's swell on your that committee. Yeah, that's great. And when I say around, I also feel like meaningful, not necessarily like, here's some donuts, which I'm sure, I mean, that's a good thing sometimes. But a meaningful, like, level of support. So that makes sense to me. I don't think that we're faulting the review of HR, but just to highlight that it should be.
And I would encourage you, um, if you have any specific ideas, if you want to join an HR meeting, email the chair, funnel any thoughts maybe through Renee, whatever the most, uh, appropriate OMA compliant way. We'd love to have your ideas.
They are not on the same committee, so that you definitely could email Jenny.
She may have something about something, well, maybe I've related anyway.
Well, there you go.
I'm a bit of a library, so I left. Um, thank you. I had one, I didn't even add it.
Others don't have to be added technically. You can just add another other since we're here. Before, I just want to acknowledge on behalf of the library staff, thank you for this idea and proposal for bringing it up. Um, uh, it's very well appreciated and heard, um, and we appreciate it greatly.
Um, the second thing is more just like a notification. I've been doing some research into funding opportunities for libraries. And Renee and I have talked a little bit about, um, what the needs will be. So the security cameras that came up and are there opportunities that exist, we can tap into to support libraries, um. And one of them is called Live and Learn Construction Grant. And it is a public library construction grant in Illinois. Uh, I came upon it looking at a mini grant that's specific to security needs that make local libraries not eligible for based on our per capita, like headcount funding rate is high to qualify. Uh, but the Live and Learn Construction Grant is quite a bit larger, uh, and this is something that we, there will be funding for with applications typically due in January, uh. And this is, uh, would require matching funds from, uh, your local village or city, uh, and one of the match, you know, a whole week that, you know, um, it looks like they will be due January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and this would be something we want to have to building and grounds, finding a small range of planning, like, there's a lot of crossover here, but wanted to flag it as something to add to the agenda once we have access to the full application. Um, it's something to consider, given the building and grounds and maintenance needs that, uh, the library has had. I think you don't have everything.
So I, I would have, I have two immediate questions about that. Do we know when the, we know the applications due January fifteenth. Do we know when the application becomes available for us to digest?
We do not. But Renee can. Um, so the way that it's accessed is using, uh, like a login that Renee uses for all of the systems. Uh, so it should be available now. Uh, and I just want to pull up the exact amount as well, if there is a range.
It's run through the same, um, organization, the Illinois State Library that runs our per capita grants. Um, we, you know, the managers and I worked on IFLAR this year. That's the annual, um, public library, uh, statistical report that we have to submit in order to be eligible for grants like this. And so, um, she found the Live and Learn Grant and I was like, oh yeah, let's talk about it because it's something that they do every year. Um, and libraries often, um, apply and they receive significant.
So there are two categories, and I should build on that. Uh, there's an accessibility, so remodeling for accessibility, which I know is one of the things on our building and grounds list. Uh, and that's a range from twenty-five hundred to fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and then there's a new construction or remodeling range, just twenty-three thousand to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that can be, um, remodeling of existing buildings, um, and you can convert any space that's not currently used for library services. So if there's nothing outfitted and used for public all of them. Uh, so there are two kind of subcategories to these there.
So my, my second question is, do we know if our money is in our fund balance can be used as the matching funds?
Uh, that's a good question. I mean, they define it as a local matching funds. And so I don't, that means that money has to come from local dollars.
It does. It's from local property taxes.
There's a way, like, to use it in a reserve or maybe to after getting an award, a grant award. It, it depends on if there's like a timestamp, at least in my experience with matching funds. So I think.
There's one point person at the state library who's in charge of all the grants. And I spoke to him already about the per capita when I was doing that application and when we first received it. Brian or something with a B. I don't remember his name, but, um, he would be the person that I would ask about the matching funds. My experience is often outside of your institution. So I would lean to say no, but I would not answer officially until I get this person's official answer. When I read applications like that for the grants that I've done, um, it's a separate organization like a foundation, like a friends.
Um, I think we jumped to Mark to the grants.
Mark, what's his last name? Oh, yeah, I'm totally wrong with the B. I was wrong. It's been a long week. It's Mark.
And do you, does anyone know whether, Janie, your experience with the roof replacement here or other? Is there ever the opportunity to recruit grant money for something like the roof replacement, which we did? Like to retrospectively get grant money for major infrastructure?
These are new, this is new work. So these two grants that Ally is talking about, it's not retrofitting, but like I, I mean, if they exist, let's apply for them. I don't know where they are.
Correct.
I do have experience with federal funds being in, uh, sort of reimbursement, basically to accrue the cost and then pay them off and then receive reimbursement. I don't, I have not seen it in, like, this central libraries, but happy to look.
I mean, it could also be private. I mean, there are so many organizations and donors that have private grants and private application processes and they may have different, but yeah, it's just a matter of finding them.
It is a for companies that work in development. Um, it is a tough sell to say, provide a roof. And they're like, no, how about four hundred for our books? You're like, that's not what I need all the time. So like, I would, it would be a tough sell to get that from, I know the drive family foundation, um, but it is absolutely worth looking into if there are other.
I just want to thank Ally because one of the first things I learned about you was your grant background. And I said, this is an area I definitely have experience, but don't have time for. So, um, I just want to say thank you for the support and the research here.
I will reach out to her.
Yeah, definitely.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions about the grant information that Ally just shared? Okay, I have one, one quick question for Renee about the comments that came through and suggestions. Um, does the library respond to all of those cards or the cards that kind of, you know, it's, it's a, it's not a, we love you, right? But it's, hey, could we, like, could you, like?
If they include their contact information, yes. I call or email. Um, I often get email or email, and get phone messages of the same nature. I'll call and follow up.
Yeah.
Um, so yes, so and, and actually one of the comments is a patron that comes in often and I had an in-person conversation with them. So, um, if they opt to be contacted, not everybody does, um, then I do.
Yeah. So out of curiosity, the specific request for adult Spanish language books. I believe our e-collection includes adult Spanish.
It does.
Items.
I have a feeling though, given that it is I'll, if you want to speak to this too, we have a high number of care, uh, a large number of caregivers of children that speak Spanish in the building that come in day to day. Um, and oftentimes I know having conversations with them, they're working on bilingualism with their child. Um, and so my, in other library experiences, it's oftentimes the caregivers looking for materials for themselves, not finding them and, um, and wanting to access them. Now, they didn't identify Spanish ebooks or Spanish print books in that comment, so, um, it would be if I had the capacity to follow up, I, I would, but I don't remember if that information was shown. So we do, we do.
Okay. Okay, that's what I, I thought that was the case because I myself am using the filters in
Yes.
Libby and such.
Yes, absolutely.
Been able to say just English, whatever.
But no print.
Yeah. Okay. All right, um, any other rights? During that, I accept any motion to adjourn.
Also.
Thank you trustee George. Uh, thank you trustee Jardine.
Yes.
All right. So all those in favor? Hi, all those opposed? We have adjourned at eight thirty-one. It's a new record. We have adjourned at eight thirty-one. It's a new record.